To the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting, April 25, 2023. And the first item is to call to the order on the meeting and then at 7:31. And next, please stand up for the pleasure of the allegiance. So next in the agenda is roll call, please.
Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Ratafratta.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Aki.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassman is absent with excuse. Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next in the agenda is public appearances for non-agenda items. So we have one person that want to speak is Mike Croft. Mike, can you come to the?
Yes.
You have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. I am here to talk about our meeting on Sunday with the Pittsburgh Historical Society. And we had a speaker that talked about National Register of Historic Places potential sites here in Pittsburgh. My wife and I have put the most recent property that's on the National Register here in Pittsburgh of the five, it's the most recent, and that was 30 years ago. So what I'd like to do tonight is have you potentially get your support for adding another site, which is actually in the Veterans Memorial Park. It's the Weary Veteran Sculpture. So I will come back to this body again to talk more about that, but just thought I'd have a pre-meeting conference or notification that we'll do that. And I'll work with Deanna Schmidt too, as well as the Landmark Preservation Commission. But I'm just here to ask for your support in that.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
May I ask Mike a question before he goes?
Okay.
Just a quick question about that sculpture. I know some, it's probably been like 15 years ago, the artist had come back to do some restoration work to it. Do you know what the current condition of the sculpture is?
It's in very good shape. We actually had Vanguard, I believe it is, the sculptures that in out of Milwaukee that do a lot of work with hairy white horse sculptures. And they did an assessment on it this past summer and thought it was in very good condition. And what you're referring to may have been a vandalism of a removed finger that he may have replaced at that time, if I'm.
He did several things. There were some holes that had developed in it and some other, some other things in the finger may have been one of them also, but.
Yep. It's in good shape.
Excellent.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
So next in the agenda, we have a couple of mayor proclamations. We have three. So the first one is recognizing April 28, 2023 as the official Pittsburgh Arbor Day and Earth Day celebration. So whereas in 1972, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day called Arbor Day be set aside for the planting of trees and.
Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world and.
Whereas each year, the last Friday in April, people throughout Wisconsin and across the country celebrate Arbor Day by paying a special attention to the wonderful treasure that trees represent and by dedicating themselves to the continued health of our urban and rural forests and.
Whereas every tree planted, nurtured, or maintained by past generations and enjoyed by citizens today bears witness to the foresight of our predecessors, men, women, who were inspired by the notion of a future blessed with trees and.
Whereas in December of 1998, Pittsburgh City Council acknowledged the importance of tree by resolving to develop a community tree management program with a goal of achieving Tree City USA status and applying for grants to help plant and maintain trees in the city and.
Whereas trees can reduce runoff, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, calm traffic, and are a source of joy and spiritual renewal, and provide habitat for wildlife and.
Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality for business areas, beautifies our community and.
Whereas Pittsburgh has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for 25 consecutive years and has earned 11 growth awards and desires to continue its tree planting ways and.
Whereas in 1970, Senator Gaylord Nelson of Wisconsin suggested in a speech that one day demonstration be held to show concern for environment. April 22, 1970 was designated the original Earth Day and.
Whereas in recognition of Earth Day, April 22, 2023, is it is desirable to undertake efforts to clean up our communities' road sides and parks and.
Whereas planting tree by Pittsburgh citizens represent a commitment to our community, environment, urban forestry, and aesthetic beauty.
Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Pittsburgh that April 28, 2023 is officially known as Pittsburgh Arbor Day and Earth Day celebration.
Now, therefore, be it further proclaimed by the city of Pittsburgh that all citizens are urged to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and support our city urban forestry program, that all citizens are urged to plant tree to promote the well-being of present and future generation so that future generation can continue to enjoy a green and healthy community and to look back upon the forest site and dedication of the predecessors with pride and with gratitude and to join with others across our state and nation in celebrating the nobility of a tree proclaimed April 25, 2023. So do we have anyone from the Tree Committee or Tree? Yeah, let's go. We're going to have a picture. Come, ladies. So Sue and Linda are residents that are part of the Tree Committee. And I, last year, I was part of the Tree Committee and I have so much fun and I learned so much about trees. So I want to say thank you very much for all the work that you do. So Sue.
Thank you. I don't know most of you. My name is Sue Feber and I'm a member of the Tree Advisory Committee. And I'm happy to accept this proclamation on behalf of the committee. And I'm happy to see the city's continued commitment to trees and tree issues. Most of you probably know that the Tree Advisory Committee has been working on a tree preservation ordinance for a couple of years, and that will be coming before the council for approval in the near future. So I'm hoping that in keeping with this proclamation, that you will support that ordinance when it comes to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda?
I want to say I'm very grateful to be part of this community and thank you all.
Thank you. So this one is, okay. So the second proclamation is recognizing May 2023 as the National Bike Month, May 19, 2023, as the National Bike to Work Day, and June 3 to the 10th as Wisconsin Bike Week. Whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Pittsburgh scenic beauty and. Bill.
Whereas Pittsburgh was recognized by the League of American Bicyclists as a bronze bicycle-friendly community in 2012 and a silver bicycle-friendly community in 2015 and 2019 and.
Whereas in 1956, the League of American Bicyclists established May as National Bike Month and designated May 19, 2023, as National Bike to Work Day, and the Wisconsin Bike Federation has declared June 4 through the 11th as Wisconsin Bike Week in 2022 and.
Whereas Pittsburgh's comfortable, low-stress system of trails, paths, and on-road bicycle facilities, including the unique Velo Underround, the confluence of five state and regional trails, attracts bicyclists from a multi-state region each year, providing economic, health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits and.
Whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community improves resident health, well-being, and quality of life, grows the economy of Pittsburgh, attracting tourists, improves traffic safety, supports student learning outcomes, and reduces pollution, congestion, and wear and tear of our streets and roads and.
Whereas Bike Pittsburgh, the Pittsburgh Chamber Visitors and Business Bureau, the Wisconsin Bike Fed, the Bike League, and many other organizations will be promoting bicycling during May, June 3 through 10, 2023, and year-round to attract more visitors to enjoy our local restaurants, hotels, retailers, and cultural and scenic attractions and.
Whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and providing safety education to reduce crashes, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road.
Now, therefore, I, Julia Ratafratta, Mayor of Pittsburgh, Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim May as Bike Month, May 19 as a Bike to Work Day, and June 3 to the 10 as a Wisconsin Bike Week in the city of Pittsburgh. And I urge all residents to begin to continue a bike-riding habit and support bicycling in Pittsburgh and throughout our region for all its economics, safety, transportation, and health benefit, proclaimed this 25th of April. So now we're going to have pictures. All of this. Bikers in the team.
Oh, gosh, do I have to be on TV? I was a print journalist, so, you know, I don't have to be on TV. But anyway, I'm Daryl Jordan. I am the current president of Bike Pittsburgh, a local advocacy group that is not directly tied to the city, but really involved with helping the city of Pittsburgh become a better cycling community. And I can't tell you how unique Pittsburgh is as a city to have a different, a wide variety of environments to bicycle in. I mean, having lived in that municipality to the north, which is all urban, Pittsburgh has a wide variety to bicycle in, and it's just a treat to bicycle through here on my bicycles and my recumbent tricycles and whatever other human-powered vehicles I might acquire in the near future. So thank you for making all cyclists feel welcome in Pittsburgh.
Thank you very much. Steve, do you want to say something?
I'll just briefly introduce. You already know that Daryl is the president of Bike Pittsburgh. Bill is the secretary. Jetzer, and I am the treasurer. And I'm also the secretary of the statewide Wisconsin Bike Fed. So we're pleased with Pittsburgh and all that you have done, and we thank you for your support of biking on behalf of the Bike Fed, too.
Thank you, Steve.
Mayor, may I add something?
Yeah. Oh, you have your own.
I just want to give props to Bike Pittsburgh, especially Steve. They've been really critical in putting bike infrastructure in different places throughout the community. So they put a bike repair stand in King James Park. They put one at Luna's. They've put bike stands there. They've just done a lot to be able to help infrastructure, you know, giving their own labor and their own time. So appreciate you all for what you do.
So our final is proclamation celebrating our 40 years as a city. And I want to thank all the former mayors, elected officials, and residents that are here, and the staff that are here. So thank you for make this, making this city a better place for all of us. And thank you very much. So now we are going to share our proclamation. So whereas a historic event took place on April 26, 1983, the city of Pittsburgh incorporated from a town to a city after four to three Wisconsin Supreme Court ruling to allow the incorporation of the former township encompassing just under 36 square miles, served by the three school districts of Madison, Oregon, and Verona and.
Whereas on April 26, 1983, Pittsburgh employed 41 full-time employees, including 19 sworn and professional police staff, two full-time fire department staff with numerous volunteer firefighters, and a volunteer Fitchrona EMS department, and had eight plows and parks trucks. On that date in 1983, the number-one song was "Beat It" by Michael Jackson. The average cost of a gallon of milk was $2.24, and Ronald Reagan was president and.
Whereas the city of Pittsburgh grew from 12,000 in 1983 to 30,999 residents in 2023, enhanced with a diverse population and is 27th largest city in Wisconsin and the third largest in Dane County. Today, Pittsburgh has a total city staff team of 254 employees, 193 of those full-time, including a police department with 55 sworn personnel and 12 professional full-time personnel with a K-9 unit, a fire department with 17 full-time personnel, plus five fire science interns, and 40 paid-on-call firefighters, and part-time support staff, a Fitchrona EMS department with 23 full-time and numerous LTE paramedics, and a fleet of 20 public works and parks trucks and.
Whereas Pittsburgh residential and business growth has expanded, expanded its tax base from $325 million to approximately $5 billion with a current budget of $59.4 million. And along with the city's commitment to financial planning and management, has helped secure a double-A1 bond rating and.
Whereas, whereas since April 26, 1983, the Pittsburgh of today continues to evolve into full-service city and is home to approximately 1,000 businesses, ranging from industry leaders such as Promega Corporation and Sub-Zero Wolf Cove, to small businesses like Platypus Technologies and Potter's Crackers. And with an entrepreneurial-minded Pittsburgh Chamber Visitor and Business Bureau, the growth over the past 40 years can be attributed to the leadership from Pittsburgh mayors, including Ed LaFrambeaus from 1983 to 85, Jeanne Seelig from 1985 through 88, Charles Apoff, 1988, Tom Cap, 1988 through 91, Francis Huntley-Cooper, 1991 through 93, Douglas Morissette, 1993 through 99, Mark Vivian, 1999 through 2003, Thomas Clotter, 2003 through 2009, Jay Allen, 2009 through 2011, Sean Pfaff, 2011 through 15, Steve Arnold, 2015 through 2017, Jason Gonzalez, 2017 through 2019, and Aaron Richardson, 2019 through 2023, and Julia Ratafratta, 2023 and.
Whereas Pittsburgh is home to the Nevin Fish Hatchery, the oldest fish hatchery in Wisconsin. Fish hatchery is known as Wisconsin recycling leader and today leads by example through sustainability. The city of Pittsburgh, over the past 40 years, launched Fact TV in 1985 and has constructed fire stations, a community senior center, a new city hall, a library, a public works maintenance facility, a splash pad, and an inclusive playground, and hosts a variety of community and regional festivals and events, including the Burby Derby, Cesta Italia, Concerts at McKee, the Agora Art Fair, Bike for Boys and Girls Club, Pittsburgh Center Farmers Market, and the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed, contributing to the quality of life of our residents and providing community spirit and.
Whereas Pittsburgh has become known as the bike hub of Dane County and continues to invest in biking infrastructure that makes it easy to pedal your way to access the Military Ridge, Capital City, or Badger State Trails connecting to one of the city's local paths, or a visit to Quarry Ridge Recreation Area for mountain biking enthusiasts, and is launching Pittsburgh Bee Cycle this year. These cycling assets reinforce why the city was awarded the Silver Bicycle Friendly Community Designation by the League of American Bicyclists and.
Whereas Pittsburgh continues its sustainability legacy by focusing on high-quality development with smart planning and growth connected via an expansive park and recreation network that will benefit the city's future generations. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city of Pittsburgh celebrates its 40th anniversary of incorporating as a city on April 26, 2023, and recognizes its commitment to the diversity of its residents and businesses, and will continue to build a community where people are proud to live, work, and play. Further, we urge all citizens to join in celebrating as we remember the past and look forward to future successes. Before we do photos with some of our past mayors and other elected officials, and also take a brief recess for some light refreshments in the Jeanne Seeling Room, I do want to share there are several events planned throughout the year, and I'll just share those now so folks can get those on their calendar. We will continue to celebrate our 40th anniversary at events all year long, including honoring Pittsburgh's rich agricultural history by offering Retro Pittsburgh Farm tote bags at the Pittsburgh Farmers Market on Thursday, June 29. Pittsburgh Community Fireworks will be held after the Pittsburgh Festival of Speed on Saturday, July 8. And a birthday cake will be served during Concerts at McKee on Monday, July 17, which will feature the People Brothers Band. More events and activities will also be scheduled throughout the year, so please watch for details on visitfitchburg.com, i.e. the Chamber website calendar, and also the city's website at fitchburgwi.gov/40years.
Thank you. So now I need a motion to recess for a couple of minutes so we can go to the, celebrate the 40 years in the Jeanne Seeling.
Second. Randy did in the next second.
Okay. All of us in favor of recessing for a couple of minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So we are going to recess for a couple of minutes, okay? Thank you.
Let's do a photograph for those who are present as well.
I'll move to reconvene the meeting.
Second.
All of us in favor of reconvening the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. So next in our agenda is the mayor appointments for citizen members to committees and commission. We are going to start with the reappointments, but before that, I want to make, as I want to say how I proceed with this, we had 21 residents to reappoint. I reappointed 81% of them, and then I had 11 vacancies to cover. So for the meeting, the May meeting, we have, I am bringing forward a mayor appointment for the Parks Commission and for the Sonning Board of Appeal, they couldn't come today. So those two are coming in May. So I tried to find for residents that they are, you know, they have qualification and expertise for each of the areas of commission and committees. I think the people that I am moving forward are, they have those qualifications. So who is going to move there? I need a motion.
So move.
Approval of the reappointments.
So all the, so we are going to go through the, all the reappointment in one batch? Is that? Do I have a second?
Second for the reappointments, is that what we're doing?
Who did the first one? Joe? All those in favor for the reappointments, say aye.
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 Nays, the motion carries. So next, for the new appointments, we are going to do it one by one. Each resident, come to the microphone here and introduce yourself and determine why you want to be appointed to one of the commissions, okay? So, so I need, the first one is going to be Kelly Jetzer for the Bicycle Committee, and we are going through alphabetical order of the commission.
Hello, I'm Kelly Jetzer, and I would like to encourage the city to be working hard toward a connected bike infrastructure system so that people are able to get, get away without having a car if they choose or cannot afford to have a car so that they can still function in this city by taking bikes safely. So that is why, why I would like to be on this committee.
Thank you, Kelly. Any question for Kelly?
I'll move approval of Kelly.
Second.
All of us in favor of approving Kelly Jetzer in for the bike committee, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next is Ryan Hueselman for the Bicycle Committee. Is he here? Oh, yes, he's on, on Zoom. Okay. Hi, Ryan. You have three minutes now.
Hello. Yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak to the council about the Bike Committee appointment. Quick about myself, I am currently the chair of the Healthy Neighborhoods Advisory Initiative Advisory Committee. So I'm already on a committee with the city, and I am excited to also take on the Bike Committee. Bicycling is near and dear to my heart. It is something that I love doing, and I also love helping out other organizations in that sphere. I'm actually calling in right now from my weekly shop night with Free Bikes for Kids Madison. Every week, January through April, I help out by facilitating a shop night to fix up bikes that are donated, which then get given away to families and kids all over the metro area, including in Pittsburgh. I'll be helping out with one of those giveaways again this weekend. So, yeah, I really love bicycling and all that it entails. One of the things that I love most about being a citizen in Pittsburgh is how much infrastructure we have and how many opportunities we have to continue to build that out, to advocate for it, and to provide our citizens with, you know, mobility and transportation options beyond just automobiles. So, yeah, that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any question for Ryan? No?
I will move approval of Ryan Hueselman for the Bicycle Committee.
Second.
All those in favor of appro- All those in favor of approving Ryan for the bike committee, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. Next is Don Gatkowski for the Board of Public Works. I'm sorry, Don. So.
That's all right. Uh, Don Gatkowski, Public Works. My background, currently working for National Park Service. I'm a civil engineer, working on bridges, roads, congestion, traffic, um, uh, some grant stuff going on. But prior to that, 36 years with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. So I did everything from project management to being district engineer up in Eau Claire area, so the northwest part of the region. When I worked up there and lived in Eau Claire, I was also on the Bike and Ped Committee and, um, worked down in Madison here in the Bureau of Traffic Operations and also had the Traffic Operations Center over in Milwaukee. So I think it'd be exciting to work on it. Uh, Public Works touches everyone, and so it'd be a cool challenge to work with that committee.
Thank you, Don. Any question for him? Oh, David.
Uh, just, uh, I'm excited to have you on the board with us. Uh, Don, you know, your experience fits in perfectly. Like I say, we don't run across someone with that background very often, so we're excited to, um, we're excited to have you joining us here on the Board of Public Works.
Be awesome. Thank you.
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of approving, uh, Don, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. So next is Sheri Otun? Otun? I don't know. Yeah. For the Board of Review. How do you pronounce your name?
Sherif.
Sherif?
Shout Sheriff.
Okay, Sherif, okay.
Yes.
Thank you for coming. So can you tell us a little bit about you and why you want to be in this committee?
Absolutely. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for the pleasure to communicate with you guys and meet with you guys today as a member of Fitchburg community as a whole. My name is Sherif Otun. As you might be familiar, I am a research scientist for roughly about seven years now. My day-to-day task pretty much deals with intricate data analysis and also project management to the detail. I am actually in consideration for the Fitchburg Board of Review at this point in time, and I believe my data analytical and also management skill, we play a critical role in this board in able to be able to further drive the board's mission of a fair assessment of property owners and also equitable distribution across Fitchburg. Thank you.
Any question?
I will move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Sherif, say aye.
Aye.
Um, nay, the motion carries. Thank you, Sherif. Next, um, we have Carol Poole for the Board of Review. Carol? Carol was, um, a former elected official representing District 1, so thank you for wanting to serve again.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. My name is Carol Poole. I have served the Fitchburg community for probably 30 of the 42 years that I've lived here in one capacity or another. I started out in my neighborhood association and then went on to run for Alder, served four terms, and also chaired the Plan Commission for, um, four terms. So I'm very familiar with city government. I'm very familiar with the zoning process, with the assessment process, and I have never once shied away from a really heavy lifting position in the city. I always took the hard committee assignments. I work hard, and I'm happy to serve Fitchburg in this capacity if you choose to appoint me.
Thank you, Carol. Any question for Carol?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Carol Poole for?
Aye. Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, um, we have Nicole Baffadari. I don't know if I pronounced correct your name, Nicole, for, also for the Board of Review.
You pronounced it perfectly, so. Um, good evening. My name is Nicole Baffadari. Um, I'm a proud resident of Fitchburg. I live here with my two young kids, two and five. They attend Woods Hollow right over there, and they love the farmers markets on Thursdays, so thank you for running those. Um, and I'm applying for the Board of Review. Um, I'm currently, uh, the clerk and elected member of the school board of the Verona Area School District, um, and I love serving the children and staff and taxpayers of the school district, and I thought it would be great to do the same thing for the city. I'm very proud to live in. I've learned a lot more about finance over the past year and a half. Professionally, I've been responsible for portfolios anywhere ranging from $6 to $12 million. I've managed large staff, so I understand finance, and recently raised, helped pass a referendum for $19 million for the Verona Area School District, as well as understanding what a TID is. So, um, and lastly, I guess, I'm not, I'm not one to shy away from any conversation kind of raising my hand saying, "I don't understand this particular item. Please explain in further detail," and making sure that the taxpayers of this district are properly advocated for.
Thank you, Nicole. Any question for Nicole?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Nicole Baffadari, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. Um, next we move to, um, Janice Hughes for the Commission of Aging Well.
Good evening. My name is Janice Hughes, and I have been a resident of Fitchburg for about 23 years. My reason for wanting to be involved, first of all, is in the community. I do believe that it's important to give back to the community in which one lives. I also, uh, my background is, uh, human resources. I am retired, but I have worked with people from all walks of life, all ages and what have you. I think that Fitchburg is a great community. However, it has changed. The demographics have changed tremendously, and I think there's a lot of residents here, particularly black and brown residents, that are not familiar with the great resource that we have over in the senior center. My involvement in the senior center is not just starting tonight in sitting here at this table. I've been involved for the last few months. Basically, I was a key person involved in the most recent Women's History Month event that occurred. Maybe many of you are aware of that. But I think that it's really important that we do outreach and allow residents of our community to know that we have an amazing resource over in the senior center. And so that's one of the reasons that I am involved and I'm committed to helping the senior grow and move forward, the senior center grow and move forward. I think the outreach and us being a little more inclusive will do tremendous for not just the center, but for the city of Fitchburg as a whole.
Thank you. Any question?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor of approving Janice Hughes for the Commission of Aging Well, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So next we have Mario Garcia Sierra for the Community and Economic Development Authority. Hey, Mario, you ready?
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here in front of you, and thank you for considering my application. My name is Mario Garcia Sierra, and I'm a new Fitchburg resident. I live in District 3, I believe, Fahy Fields, three minutes away from here, driving. And I'm there with a small family unit, 13-year-old, 13-year-old daughter, my wife, and two dogs. So I believe in, uh, community involvement, community engagement. Currently, I work for Madison Gas and Electric. So I'm the director of this, uh, area called Residential and Community Services. We do a lot of partnerships for the company related to, uh, main course of, of the, um, of what MGNES is all about. And why am I interested in serving in this committee? My background is in applied economics. I came here to UW Madison to learn about, um, economic growth, how a nation can grow, and then, um, I just took it to a, to the more local level, and my, I never left. I stayed here, so it's been 20 years later. Then I'm finishing a program in sustainable, um, management, just taking up the built environment and what really takes for communities, neighborhoods to grow and thrive. So I believe that my background, my experience is in alignment with, uh, with this committee and how the, how the city is growing. So I really hope to, uh, to serve and share my expertise in, in this committee. I think that that's why I'm not shown.
Thank you, Mario. Any question for Mario? David.
Mario, thank you, thank you for applying. Your, your background is very impressive. I hope you won't take this personally, but there, a person that was not reappointed on this, I felt should have been reappointed. If you look, he was denied because said he was only served a partial term. If you look on the people we appointed, you know, our former, our former mayor, Sean, was also on a partial term, and he was reappointed. So I, I would, you know, I'm not going to vote for you. If there's an opening in the future, you get my vote immediately. And it's not because I don't feel you're qualified. You obviously are, but I, I think the person that was on there should have been allowed to be reappointed. That's, that's all. Thank you. This is not, there's no, no indication of, of you. Please don't take it that way.
Uh, okay. Yeah. Maybe, uh, yeah, we should go out to coffee and, yeah. And then, I think I'm happy to hear, and thanks for explaining. Um, we, I have, I had no idea about any of this. I have, I don't know how this process works, but, um, yeah, I'm happy to get to know you and you get to know me and, and really understand a little bit more about why I'm applying. I also believe in representation, and when I look at your website and when I see about the values that, that this city stands for, I believe that in some point, um, yeah, we got to make room for others. And like I said, I don't know any logistics or why not behind the scenes, but I think that this is where the, um, yeah, like the rubber hits the road, like the saying I learned here in the Midwest, so.
Thank you. Any other comment, Jay?
Yeah, I, I appreciate your application, but I have to tell you, I agree with Dave. We, the, the people who serve on these committees and commissions, they take time to learn about what the committees do. And I, none of this has anything to do with you, so I apologize if it sounds like it does. But they, but they come here and they're essentially volunteers that are giving their time to be on these committees. And when we have people who, um, have done that and were approved by a unanimous vote just within the last year, and now we're already going to take them off a committee, not because of, um, not because of anything they did or anything they didn't do, but just because of the result of an election, that bothers me. Uh, I don't, I, I think that, you know, if there's somebody who's been on a committee for, for, you know, four, or five, or six terms, that's one thing. But someone who's new, who's just been getting their feet wet, just starting to understand how the committee works to make that kind of a change, I just don't, I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's the way the city ought to function. I think that we need to send a message to people that if we appoint you to a committee, we, we believe that you can do the work. So, um, I'm, I'm, I'm sadly telling you I'm going to vote no, not because of you, but because I think that Mr. Fairchild should remain on this committee for now.
I, like I said, I don't know how this process works. I just sent my application. But I don't know. I really don't have any comment. Well, I don't, I don't think that you asked a question, but I don't have any.
No, there isn't really any comment for you at this point.
Okay. Uh, Jim?
Uh, Mr. Garcia, I really appreciate your comments, especially when you said that in order for people to get on committees, we got to rotate people in and out and that, um, you know, you can't be inclusive if the same people are just going to be on the, um, on committees. With that being said, I think you said a couple of things that I think maybe at a committee of the whole we can actually work on, and that is some type of process. Um, I think, you know, you mentioned a couple of times you didn't know the process, and I think it's fair for everyone to actually know what the process is. And again, you know, we have committee of the whole meetings every, every month. We talk topics and everything, and maybe this could be one thing We talk topics and everything, and maybe this could be one thing that we put on a topic, as a topic that, you know, we come up with some type of process for this, so people understand what they're getting into.
I'm a fan and I believe in processes, so whatever you need to, we need to do to make this clear, I think it's, yeah, it's fair. I just, yeah, don't think it's fair for me because somehow there was an option to apply it and I didn't know any of this politics behind, so.
Well, we'll get along fine because I believe in process too, so we should talk.
Any other comment? No? Okay. So, so all those in favor of approving Mario Garcia's?
Madam Mayor, first of all, we need a motion.
Oh, I move approval.
Second.
And I would request a roll call.
Alder Allen?
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
No.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Four to three, motion carry.
So you have been approved. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you so much. So thank you for the welcome, for the appointment, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mario. You will do great. So next, we have an appointment for the Healthy Neighborhood Advisory Committee, and we have Kaitlyn Junis. I don't know, is this how you pronounce your last name?
Yeah, my name is Caitlyn Junis, and I am a Southdale resident. I've been living in Southdale, the Southdale neighborhood for the past roughly 10, 11 years. So I'm not new to my neighborhood or to my home, but I'm new to Fitchburg. Prior to living in Southdale, I was a middle school teacher at Senate Middle School, and so I was connected to the neighborhood through my students, who, many of whom lived in the Southdale neighborhood. So I'm excited to, for the opportunity to be on this committee because I have a deep love for my neighborhood. I've built many relationships, many connections with families in the neighborhood, with people in the neighborhood. I feel strongly that we, as a neighborhood, contribute greatly to the area, but have at the same time been somewhat neglected in terms of access to resources and opportunities that folks in many other neighborhoods seem to have access to. And so I would love to be able to be a voice for the neighborhood and a bridge, to be able to improve our work to improve quality of life for, for the Southdale neighborhood. I also come with an equity lens. My professional work is in diversity, equity, and inclusion professional development at UW Extension, and so I also would be able to contribute that lens to the committee as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any question?
I move approval.
All those in favor of approving Junis for the Healthy Neighborhood Initiative Committee, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Nace, the motion carry. Thank you very much. Next, we have, for the Plan Commission, we also have a vacancy there. We have Shelley Malofsky.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Shelley Malofsky. I live in Hillside Heights in the non-urban section of the city of Fitchburg, and I thank the mayor for nominating me to fill the role that is vacant with Ed Kinney's retirement in, for the non-urban seat on the Plan Commission. I have lived in Fitchburg for 10 years. It's in District Four. I applied for the position because I have the time and the tools and the interest, I think, to be a useful member of the commission. I am retired, and while I do some volunteer activities and I lunch very well with friends, I do have a lot of time on my hands, so I'm able to do the, the homework that's necessary for the commission and attend the meetings and just put the time in that's required. In terms of the tools that I think I bring, I practiced law for over 30 years with a state agency, and in that, I have spent all of that time learning how to approach issues analytically, gather facts that are relevant, apply them to any disputes or proposals, figure out how the overriding framework, in this case, the comprehensive plan, would apply, try to problem solve, look for issues, unintended consequences, et cetera. So I think those lawyer skills will come in handy in assessing some of the proposals that come before the commission. Also, the last 10 years of that practice was spent learning public health, and I was educated in that the health of a community at the community level affects the health of the individuals within that community. And so livable spaces and neighborhoods are very important to, as I say, the, the city as a whole and the individuals that live in those communities. My interests are because I found that public health aspect very interesting. I also have the lived experience of having grown up in a large urban area, and within four to five blocks of my home was a grocery store, a five-and-dime, which I'm not sure all of you know what that was, but a five-and-dime and a meat market, a fish market, a movie theater, a beauty salon, and of course, because it's Wisconsin, there were a couple taverns. There's also a park. And I have wonderful memories of the ease and the convenience of living in a community where everything is accessible to that neighborhood. But then most of my adult life, I lived in the town of Dunn and an area which fought very hard to maintain the natural character of its open spaces, its rural ag areas. It never met a development proposal that it liked. It fought very hard for, to develop a purchase of development rights. And so I have both those experiences. I think, I think it's fascinating how a city decides to grow, and I think it's interesting and perhaps a geeky kind of way, and I would look forward to serving on the Plan Commission.
Thank you, Shelley. Any question?
Second.
All those in favor of approving, approving Shelley Malofsky for the Plan Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the motion carry. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you.
Next, we have, where are we at here? We have Andrew Sledge for Resource Conservation Commission.
So I am a UW Madison graduate in Conservation Biology and Environmental Studies, and I work professionally for the Prairie Enthusiasts. So it's, it's right up my alley to be on the Conservation Committee, and it's, I have 15 years of background doing various conservation-related work full-time. So it's in my interest to help keep the city of Fitchburg beautiful, and that is why I would like to be part of the committee.
Thank you, Andrew. Any question?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the motion carry. Thank you very much. Welcome to the committee.
Thank you.
So next, we have Steve Arnold for the Transportation and Transit Committee.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Arnold. I, you may know me from earlier this evening as being interested in bikes, but my transportation interests are wide. I was the first appointee to our Transportation Commission in 2005 and served for 10 years until I became mayor. I also am on the Board of All Aboard Wisconsin, which advocates for passenger rail and was on the Regional Planning Commission. I was set to be the Fitchburg appointee to the, to the Regional Transit Authority until at the last minute, they changed the law so that an elected official could not be a member. I represented the city on the Contracted Services Oversight Committee of Madison Metro. The current contract that the city has with the, with Madison Metro to provide transit service to the city was designed during my tenure. So I would like to return to the committee and continue to serve. I am retired. Spend my time with advocating for bicycles and transit and passenger rail and so on, but I would like to return to city service to advance some of the transportation policies that we would, our committee would present to you for consideration, and I hope that you will look favorably on my application.
Thank you, Steve. Any question?
I'll move approval.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, the motion carry. Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence.
So next, we have Donald Dantler. I don't know, I hope that pronouns your name correctly, for the Police and Fire Commission.
My name is Donald Dantler, and I've been a Fitchburg resident for about a little over four years now. I do believe in community service. However, I realized that most of the service I was doing was in the Madison area and wanted to get more involved in the community that I currently live in. So one of those things in Madison that we were doing through the 100 Black Men is improving community relations between the community and the police department. So we had several events with residents, bringing the police lieutenant, Blackmore and some other individuals, Sean Barnes, into spaces to talk with the community about how we can improve those relations. And then we also had a program where the police officers were delivering food and service to marginalized communities to improve some of those relations as well. By training, I am a research scientist and, and I analyze mainly, it's focused on quantitative data and also evaluation, so looking at those evaluative metrics and assessment and looking at those things, especially when you're making personnel decisions. Also, I serve as a trustee for the, for Madison College, where we are constantly involved in the evaluation process of different employees and rehire, and looking at contracts and assessing them for restateability or individuals who are looking to stay at the college or negotiate their contracts. And again, just happy to be here and looking forward to serving in the Fitchburg community.
Thank you. Any question?
Well, I'm gonna, I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm going to bring up the same objection that I had to the previous applicant, and this one actually hit a little closer to home because I heard from several people that Amy was quite upset that she was not being reappointed after such a short time on the committee. So I think she should have been given a chance to continue to serve. I think she still should be given a chance to continue to serve. Again, it has nothing to do with you. You're a fine applicant. But I think when, I still believe that as a city, when we have volunteers who are volunteering their time to do these things, there's some minimal level of respect that we should have for that, and these two particular appointments don't seem to respect that. So I will be voting no on this one also.
Any other comment?
Madam Mayor, I'm going to agree with everything that was said earlier from Alder Allen and Alder Herbst. However, I'm going to agree with what they, what they had to say. I do believe that these two individuals, Mark and Amy, should be given their, a full term. And I think, Allen, Alder Allen, you touched on something very important there, a word that is not often seen in this body, and that's respect. And these two individuals were selected for this position. There is no reason why they should have been terminated, considering others that are selected in a partial, in the same capacity as, and they've already been reappointed. But just to move the process forward, I am going to vote in favor.
Any other comment?
I move approval.
Oh, no, Jim.
Yeah, on this one, you know, my only concern really is that, you know, when you're on the Police and Fire Commission, this is a very serious commission. This is probably one of the most important commissions, I think, in a city, who we're talking about the hiring, firing of police officers along with promotion. And Amy did, you know, spend a lot of time learning the position, again, which I think is very important. And I, I think sometimes we got to take that into consideration. I mean, especially the way policing is now, and it's a very complex process when you have to discipline a police officer. You know, it goes, starts with the chief, then it goes through hearings if the person wants a hearing, and then actually if the officer is fired that doesn't like the discipline, now we're talking, it goes to the Court of Appeals. And that's how serious it is, along with, you know, learning the officers, the Officer Bill of Rights. So I, I do get concerned, you know, when that's not kind of taken into, into consideration, but I will vote for, for you. I just think, and again, we probably should talk about this more in the Committee of the Whole meeting as far as talking about processes.
Any other comment?
I'll move approval.
All those in favor?
Prior to that, first of all, this needs to be corrected because the, this term doesn't expire in 2025. It expires in 2028. It's a five-year term. So it's listed incorrectly in the agenda.
So I'll move approval with the, with the change that this term goes to 2028.
Corrected, wait, Tracy. Five, okay. Oh, this is, okay.
Second, Alder Gerhart.
Okay.
And then I will request a roll call.
Okay. Roll call.
No.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Nay.
Alder Jetser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Strossman is absent. Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. So thank you very much, and you are approved, okay?
Thank you.
So, so thank you, everyone, for, that came here, to all of the neighbors and residents, and thank you for, you know, willing to do this participating commission and welcome to, to Fitchburg, okay? Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. So next, we move to the next item in the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. Do you have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I would move approval.
Second.
First, do, do you want to separate anything from the consent agenda? Okay. So who, who moved it?
Yep.
And who second? Joe? All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Nace, the motion carry. Any opposed? Okay. So next, we move to the Administrator Report.
Good evening, everyone. Got a number of events and other informational items for you. As you may know, the Senior Center held its annual pancake breakfast on Sunday. They had a record number of attendees, 588 people were served at breakfast. The Fitchburg Chamber Biz After Hours event for April is scheduled April 27th, this Thursday at 4:00 PM, and that'll be at the Hop House. There's also a blood drive at Fire Station Number Two on Marketplace Drive on Friday, April 28th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. There will be the Spring Shred, E-Cycling, and Med Drop event this Saturday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at City Hall. This week is also National Library Week, and the library will be handing out tote bags to visitors in honor of this week. The library will also be closed on May 3rd for staff in service. The Fitchburg Chamber will be hosting its Fitchburg Focus Lunch on May 2nd at 11:30 AM at the Hop House as well. There will be a ribbon cutting on May 5th at 12:00 noon at the Waterford Wine and Spirits, which is the former Steve's liquor location in Orchard Point. There will also be a ribbon cutting on May 10th at 4:30 PM for the official rollout of the B-cycle Program. That will be held at the Agora Pavilion. Audiovisual upgrades will be taking place in the Genie Ceiling Meeting Room the week of May 1st, so that room will be unavailable for that week while those upgrades take place. The Sine Road Reconstruction Project, currently the intersection of Sine Road and Lacy Road is closed, and it's anticipated that closure is going to extend through the month of June. Initial preparation work involving brush removal is beginning on Lacy Road. There's an item for consideration later this evening, but the reconstruction, assuming approval of the contract and bid this evening, that work is anticipated to begin as far as road closures, when the school year ends. And then the first phase of that construction would have the roundabout reopening ideally in time for school beginning in the fall, and then the rest of the road will remain closed likely until November. And then finally, you received an email today from Deanna Schmidt, our Planning and Zoning Administrator. The Minor Comp Plan Amendment Period has opened. The city does two of those each year. If you could be sure to take a look at that email, and if you're aware of any minor comp plan amendments that need to be brought forward, you can follow the process that's been identified in the email. Amendments are due May 23rd at 12:00 noon, and if you have any questions, please reach out to Deanna. Any questions for me at all?
Any question? No? Okay. Thank you, Chad. So next, we move to the Commission Report, Plan Commission. So for the first one, we need to, a motion to postpone.
I'll move to postpone CS 248222 to the July 18, oh, I'm sorry, July 25 meeting.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nace, the motion carry. We need to also postpone the second one.
I move postponement of Resolution R 7023.
Second.
To May 9th.
All those, all those in favor to postponing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Nace, the motion carries. So next, okay. Gabriel.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 7723, releasing an ease, excess easement within Lot 2 of Certified Survey Map 3598.
Second.
Can you explain what it is?
Yeah, Dave, do you want to take it, or do you want me to?
I'll take it.
Okay, great.
I'll take it. So at one time, the city, we, we purchased a lot for a future well site, and we decided or we didn't need that site. We sold. And we decided, or we didn't need that site, we sold the lot, but we still had the easement to get into get into the site, and we no longer needed that. So that is releasing this easement to the person that he no longer needs an easement, or we no longer need an easement across a private piece of property we have no interest in.
Any question? All those in favor of approving Resolution R dash 77 dash 23, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries. So next one.
I'll move approval, Resolution R 7823, releasing the utility easement in Lot 1 of Certified Survey Map 3598.
Second.
This is related to the first one. You know, we would have had an easement to put either electric or water through that, and since we no longer own the lot, we are releasing that easement. Probably, I would just add, we probably should have done this when we sold the property originally.
Oh, I think we have a, so we are in Public Works?
They're both, yeah.
Okay, okay, okay. Any question for Dave? All in favor of approving Resolution R dash 78 dash 23, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries. So next.
I will move approval of Resolution R 9023, CS 250323, approving a Certified Survey Map Request, CS 250323, by Dan Day, Agent for Denofrio, Kotkey &amp; Associates, and VH Highline Reserve LLC, to allow the subdivision of three existing lots into four proposed buildable lots in Highfield Reserve located on G.G. Way.
Second.
And this is fairly simple. The they had it zoned in three lots, they think that they can have four units in the same space, so they want to subdivide that into four lots instead. Plan Commission approved it.
Any question? Oh, Jay.
Yeah. I noticed on the map, there's this Outlot 3 that is not being subdivided at this time. Is there a plan for that that we know of, or have they indicated what the future use might be?
I don't recall that being discussed at the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not aware. Deanna, I see that you're on Zoom. Do you have any information perhaps in regards to that outlot that Alder Allen is referring to?
Off the top of my head, all of the lands in Highfield Reserve are accounted for, either as dedicated to the public for park space, or perhaps it's an outlot for alley. And I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Well, it looks like it's about, it looks like it's probably about 60 feet by maybe maybe 100 and, maybe 120 feet. So it's a fairly large outlot. I just wondered if there was a plan for a building there, or it's just identified on the map as Outlot 3. It's at the intersection of Notre Dame and Nobel.
Yep. I got that. Yeah, that is dedicated for parkland.
Really? Okay.
Yep, that is actually City of Pittsburgh ownership.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Any other question? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 90 dash 23, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 9123, CS 250223, approving Certified Survey Map Request, CS 250223, by Sherri Yu, Agent for Fitchburg Lands LLC, to approve a Certified Survey Map to allow the subdivision of three buildable lots from Outlot 66 of Terravessa, located off Suelo Road in that development.
Second.
Is it a Terravessa Town Home?
Yeah, so this is a they're creating a series of townhomes. They're, I believe they're two-bedroom, one-bath, one-car garage, and this is the first step in that process to make them. They have some information that we discussed briefly at the meeting as well. If you want to know more, there's some information out there.
Any question? No? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution R dash 91 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries.
And I had a couple more things I want to add to my report, if that's okay.
Okay, anything else from Plan Commission, Gabriela?
Wanted to mention a couple of things that aren't going to be coming back to council. So the conditional use permit for Yahara Materials on Lacy Road, and we had a couple of public comments about it last time. That was approved with 51 conditions from the Plan Commission, which is quite a lot of conditions. We did have quite extensive discussion, so if anyone has questions about that, there's a lot of answers on that tape. But, and I'd be happy to summarize it if anyone wants the summary. And then we had an ADR for the Fitchburg Senior Center Patio, so more information about that. There was an ADR for Tosh Bioscience, they're reconfiguring their parking lot, and some landscape changes. And there was also an ADR from, for the Avalon property, they were changing some materials, then and that's all.
Thank you, Gabriela. Next, we move to Board of Public Works.
Gabriela, I'm sorry for taking the other ones that were in yours, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're fine, Dave. I have no problem sharing.
They had Board of Public Works first, and I just so I'll move approval, Resolution R 7123, approving dog park improvements in Crescent Crossing. That one's delayed too.
No, could you make a motion to move Item 5 up, pull out Item 2 for me, please?
I would like to make a motion to move Item 5, Resolution R 8323, after after Resolution R 7223.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries, so.
All right, so then I will move approval of Resolution, if I can page down here, I'm sorry. Bad fingers. Move approval, Resolution R 7123, approving dog playground improvements in Crescent Crossing, Outlot 11.
Second.
Did Park Commission approve? Yes.
Public Works approved also.
Finance, Randy? Okay, thank you. What is this, David?
These are some enhancements, fenced-in dog park in Crescent Crossing. You go by, you'll see the area. Exactly what they are, I don't know if they're tunnels for the dogs to jump through. I'm not a big supporter, you know, my my dog, if I have a ball to throw or something, he's plenty happy, but residents wanted this, this was paid, this in lieu of parkland dedication fees, you know, paid for this, and this is something the residents in that neighborhood wanted. So they went through, they went through a little winnowing of the options and cut it back some, but they have you know, people are happy with what is being installed.
Any question for Dave?
Probably happy with the cardboard box.
Okay, so all those in favor of Resolution R dash 71 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval, Resolution R 7223, approving a state municipal agreement to fund the purchase of eight bus stop shelters.
Second.
Did Transportation and Transit Commission approve?
Yes.
Finance Committee?
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Public Works approved with the new bus routes, different locations are going to require shelters. They will look at possibly moving, like in my neighborhood, there's several that are there that will be abandoned. I guess they're still going to look at possibly moving those, but we are going to need new shelters with the reconfigured bus route.
Any questions? Comments?
The only question I had is, it, I, since the since the route through Southdale is largely following the path that was there previously, after the amendments that we made to the plan before, I presume that nothing's going to change there. And there is one stop there that could benefit from a shelter. So that may be something that we'll have to look at in our capital improvement plan.
Any question?
I, we should, if Tim is on the line, my understanding was back when we talked about this at TTC, it wasn't final which shelters were which shelters were going where, that might have changed in the weeks since. Tim, have they decided where the eight bus shelters are going to go finally?
Well, and that's discussions we're still having with Madison Metro. The application in the agreement has a map attached, and it's in the Agenda item, that there's four bus stops on Fish Hatchery Road, three bus stops on Allied, and then one bus stop on McKee. But we're still going to have those discussions and conversations with Madison Metro to firm those up.
Just wanted to make sure that Alder Allen's message was received as a positive consideration. Yeah, okay, great.
Alder Maldonado?
Tim, what, or Gabriela, what's the determination for, or is there like a metric for whether a stop gets a shelter or not? Or is that a Madison Metro question?
Yeah, that would be a Madison Metro question. I'd be happy to ask that when we do sit down with them.
Yeah, please, that would be, I'm wondering if it's like based on then population, or usage, or whatever, or if residents get a say in it, that would be helpful to know.
Sure.
Any other question for Tim? No? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 72 dash 23, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval, Resolution R 8323, approving First Amendment to Development Agreement with Promega Corporation, termination of agreement for repayment of non-developer costs, and first restated amendment of subdivision improvement agreement.
Second.
Did Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
What is this?
So initially, on the redevelopment of Lacy Road, Promega had basically some oversight or design responsibilities for portion of the project, and as we've moved forward, you know, we are managing the whole thing, and they basically have asked out of that agreement, and so that's that is what this resolution is, it's separating them and allowing the city to manage the entire project.
Any questions? We have Valerie on the, on Zoom too, if we have any legal question? No? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution R dash 83 dash 23, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries.
Next, I'll move approval, Resolution R 7423, acceptance of Lacy Road and Seminole Highway Intersection and Lacy Road Reconstruction bids.
Second.
Did Board of Public Works approve?
Public Works, Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
What is this?
So it's basically, you know, we've talked about this project a lot, you know, we have the the Lacy Road Administrator Brecklin was talking about, they're clearing the trees now, so we're widening the road, and we're also also putting the roundabout at Lacy and Seminole. So this is essentially the bid, you know, to do that work, and it had to be after the previous one, you know, where Promega was released from that agreement, so there's kind of an order order to this. We've had the bid, and we've we have the vendors selected to do the work, we just had to get the paperwork in order. And it's approximately $8 million.
Any questions? Okay, Jay.
Yeah, I was looking over these bids, Dave, and I saw Parisi came in with the $8 million bid, and then there was a $9 million bid, a $12 million bid, and a $16 million bid. Is there any rationale for why? Do they even bother to tell us why their bids are so varied?
Tim, you want to weigh in?
I mean
Yeah, so with Parisi, they have the mine, they're owned by Paint and Dolan, so that The Rock, and when they mobilize, they're all there. So the bid that was higher, it's harder for that company to mobilize, more expensive to bring their equipment, and then also haul in all that, The Rock for the road.
That explains an $8 million difference. I mean, and I don't expect you to necessarily know, it's just, I don't know why I don't know why they would even bother submitting a bid in a situation like this.
Alder Allen, if I could speculate a little, you know, there's there's a lot of work out there, you know, probably more than, more than more work than there are contractors to do it, and I think some of them just take a flyer, once in a while it pays off. You know, other people were busy, that's the only one they get, I don't know, that's kind of my explanation. I think they know, they all know their business, they all know their business, and maybe the $8 million one, they they were going to get the aggregate from the quarries there, but they were really going to stick it to them to get it, I don't know. I think sometimes companies just take take a flyer, or they look at and say, we're not going to spend, say, $5,000 or $10,000 doing a detailed to figure this out accurately, you know, that maybe we don't have a great shot, we'll ballpark it, so it's kind of my my explanation, and I do the same thing sometimes on jobs that we're asked to bid. I don't think I have that greater chance, you know, give a ballpark number, and every once in a while, one ship comes in.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all those in favor of approving Resolution R dash 74 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So next one.
Move approval, Resolution R 7623, approving purchase of 2022 Streets Pickup Truck.
Second.
Did Public Works approve?
Public Works approved.
Finance?
Finance approved.
This is replacing a 2008 pickup truck whose transmission is failing. Transmission is to, truck isn't worth that much, and to replace the transmission is nearly as much as the truck is worth. So this is kind of being accelerated a little bit. Part of our problem now, you know, getting trucks is availability, and Public Works, they were able to find a truck that's that's available, that meets their needs, and I think the Streets Superintendent uses this truck a fair amount. I don't recall exactly, I don't know, Tim, do you? I think I asked you this one question, you weren't sure about it either, but I think Mark is the one that uses this.
Yes, I am the maintenance technician.
This has been in the capital improvement plan. Because with the transmission going out, I think we've moved it up a little bit.
Okay, Jay.
Yeah, this doesn't look like it includes the lights or painting, you know, painting the logos or anything on there. Do we have any idea what that cost is going to end up to be? And will that be coming on a future resolution?
I would expect it would.
Tim, do you know if Mark had that information available? I suspect some of it will be, like a radio will be moved from one vehicle to the next, and perhaps some lights. You're right, they'll probably need to put a city how do you say, I was going to say seal, but that's the old school city logo graphic on the side. I would suspect maybe a couple thousand dollars might be what we would anticipate to do those sorts of things, and then typically, that would come out of the same account that's used to purchase the vehicle.
Any other questions? All those in favor of approving sorry Resolution R dash 76 dash 23, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So next, we move to Park Commission. Dave?
I haven't this one, this one'd be mine. Do you, were you still on parks at this time?
Yeah, I can move it.
Can you move this one?
So I move approval of Resolution R dash 56 dash 23, approving the 2023 Spring Tree Planting Plan.
Second.
A point of order, the mayor can't make motions. So someone else will have to do it. it.
I'll make the, I'll motion to approve resolution R-5623, approving 2023 spring tree planting plan.
Second.
So I was in tree committee, and we approve this too, and we approve it in parks. So I can say that, isn't it? Okay. So what is this? Can I say what it is?
Sure.
Okay. Can the mayor say it?
Yep.
Okay. So what this is, we are planting 200 new, we ordered 210 trees. And this is something that we do every year. And according to Anna, you know, we got the tree, the prices were very comparable to 2022. It was a surprise, because we expected like they were higher. But, so, that's it. Any questions? I don't know, Scott is here. So Scott, do you want to add something else?
That was, that was, that was good. Five bidders, 210 trees, very competitive bid. So no, we worked with SRB in the past, and have been satisfied with their performance.
Any other questions? All of us in favor of approving resolution R-56-23, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So next, we move to the commissions. So library board.
Haven't met yet.
Okay. Commission of aging well.
We have a meeting next week, I believe. But I did want to report, kind of piggyback on Chad's report about the pancake breakfast, which went really well. I spent about three hours making sausage. That's a lot of sausage, man. So much sausage. But it was a good time. And all the attendees seemed to have a great time, and the volunteers sure did. So I hope, if you were not able to make it, you can make it next year.
So Jill mentioned that, how many people went?
584.
560, 80, something like that?
584.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Jay. Resource Conservation Commission?
We did not meet this month, but a couple of updates. We had the waterway cleanup last weekend on Saturday in four locations, and it went very well. We had a pretty big turnout at all the locations, and collected a lot of garbage. We found an entire wheel, not just the tire, but like all of the metal implements. Like, I don't know what happened, but it was sitting in a creek on Yarmouth Green May. And there were people that were getting in the creek on Yarmouth Green May, actually with boots and getting in the water, which was kind of exciting. Never seen that before, a waterway cleanup. I was only at Yarmouth Green, but I know people were all over the city. So it was a really great event. Hopefully, some of you, or some of the public can join us next year if you're interested. It's surprisingly fun to collect garbage in the waterways. So don't discount it until you've tried it. And then our recycling day, as our administrator mentioned before, our spring recycling event, we do this biannually, but our spring one is this coming Saturday, April 29, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It's at the City Hall campus in a very similar format to how we've done it before. So we do confidential paper shredding and recycling, and then also electronics recycling. If you have electronics, I would recommend you, you can search Recycling Day Fitchburg in Google, and the page will pop right up. And there's information from Resource Solutions on what can and can't be recycled. And also, certain big items have costs associated with them. So we want to make sure that you know that in advance, and you have payment ready to go, so that we can, you know, you can move through quickly and not have to delay too much. So yeah, hope to see some of you out there, 8 to 11 this coming Saturday. And that's all.
Thank you. Sida?
Transportation.
Oh, Transportation and Transit Commission.
I'm going to take this one one more time, and then Bill will take it over from there. We had a meeting back on April 13. And we talked a little bit about the transportation engineer vacancy, which is still vacant, but there's hope that maybe we can fill that very soon. There's some potential developments. So hopefully, we'll have an update next time. Cyan Road, as you know, is under construction, and there's information on the website for how that's looking. So people that are curious about what that looks like, please check out the Fitchburg website. Lacy and Seminole, obviously, we just passed that. So, and in finance, Tim shared that they're planning to move on this pretty quickly and start the paperwork, maybe as soon as next week. But the intersection will not close for construction until after school is out. And then their goal is to get it done before school starts in the fall. So, you know, just keep it from impacting the school traffic. So that's the plan. Hopefully, we'll be able to keep to that. And then one last note, the Intercity Transit Feasibility Study, which we, if you recall, late last year, we allocated some of that transportation engineer vacancy savings from that missing staff member, $25,000 towards that. They're in discussion, the staff is in discussion with Department of Transportation about a potential matching grant to make that a much more sense of study, and also potentially helping actually administer and carry the study out. Department of Transportation sometimes does that. So hopefully, we'll have some updates on that in the near future. But as you, if you recall, when we talk about the senior center shuttle, or the civic campus shuttle, that's one of the aspects of that study that we hope to see if it's feasible to do something like that. So we're hoping to get that done prior to budget, so we have that information leading into the budget season. And that's all.
Thank you. Next, Sida?
I don't know.
Randy?
You were not at the last meeting. I don't. Our next, our next Sida meeting is this Thursday. Otherwise, nothing to report.
Are you going to the tour to the?
Yes, we are touring the new McKenzie Workforce Center.
Thank you, Randy. Next, Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee?
Yes. I attended a portion of the meeting, and primarily, the portion where we discussed the conditional use, and Alder Gerhart touched upon it earlier, 51 condition, conditions. And there was some concern raised regarding the truck traffic, and 35 trucks out, 35 trucks in daily. And I proposed a four-way stop at Commerce and Lacy. And Traffic Engineer responded back that that was not an option. So there may be more discussion on that topic. As far as the pre-application conference for Applegate, or Apple Garden, and there was discussion on rural residential claims, I cannot speak to because we had the organizational meeting last week, and that's where I was. So that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you. So next, report from other commission and committees, EMS?
Yeah, went to the meeting. Calls are up from the previous year. In January, they were up 27%. In February, 26%. March, 19%. So they're on track. They're probably having about 5,300 calls this year. When you separate out Southdale, they're going to be on track for about 350 calls for the year. They're applying for a grant from EPIC for a point of care ultrasound. And that would be used for, to detect heartbeat. You know, sometimes the pulse is just too faint, and that's important when they put a CPR machine on a person. So they're going to be applying for that. Four new LTEs are being onboarded now. For those positions, they only have six applicants for those positions, and one failed the physical agility test. On their website, they do have the test, which you would have to do on their website. It includes walking on the treadmill, carrying some dumbbells up flights of stairs, carrying a arm curl bar with 90 pounds, taking it at a short distance. And there was doing kneeling and standing, and placing weights on different heights of shelves. The chief, utilizing the record management system, is able to schedule when certain policies are going to be looked at and adjusted if needed. Last month, it was equal opportunity hiring and employment practices. What was added to that policy was the prohibition of discrimination based on genetic information, military status, and gender identity. They will be putting in for next year's budget, looking for a second deputy chief. So they'll have one for administration and one for operations. That's it.
Thank you, Jim. Bicycle Committee?
We're currently looking at changing our meeting times, just because we meet at 7:30. So, and that's difficult for some of our new members with young families. So we're putting out a survey to determine what the new time should be. And we just want to find something that all the members can make. But our next meeting would be the first week in May. We just need to figure out when and what time that would be. And that'll be publicly noticed once it's decided. There was a National Rail to Trail Day. One of the locations across the United States was in Fitchburg, and it's actually at the Velo Under Round this past Saturday at 10:00 AM. So just wanted to, so Fitchburg is on the map. No other updates besides that?
Thank you. Tree Advisory Committee. So, I can do that report. Okay. So it was my last meeting in the committee, and we met on April 13. And we discussed the tree preservation ordinance. The committee wants to bring forward that ordinance to the council. Then we approved the resolution for the spring tree planting plan. And we discussed all the events that the city is organizing for the Arbor Day tree planting events. And then, as I mentioned before, April 29, they're going to be planting some tree in Southdale. They're going to be replacing some of the ash trees. And then also, in April 28, they are going to do some pilot project with Madison Canopy Project, planting some trees on the HNI neighborhoods. Especially, they are going to plant some of them in Post Road. And that's it. Yeah?
Ron, you've been approved. You know, I hope you're just staying because you want to watch council. You were, I'm sorry, you were approved, or you were reappointed, and so you were approved before. So I'm really sorry. I just, I just looked out and saw you there. And you're reappointed, so you, we did that in a block. So you don't need to stick around anymore. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay.
It must have been a thrill to watch.
Have to get a new, gotta get another prescription, get another prescription of no dose here once you leave.
Thank you. So next one is Land Smart Preservation Commission. No, Sharon is not here. Housing Advisory Committee?
I don't have a report, because we haven't had a meeting in a few months.
I think the next meeting is going to be June. Bill? Yeah. Health and Neighborhood Committee?
We haven't met since our, since our last council meeting, but we do have a meeting next week.
Okay, thank you. Police Facility Oversight Committee, Jim?
Still waiting for staff to put together the first meeting.
Okay, thank you. So...
Madam Mayor, before we move on past this, I'm sure there's a historical reason for this. But why is there a group of these committees that are listed under reports from other commissions and committees, instead of just continuing the list on down?
I think that's been a carryover for quite some time. And I don't, I see where you're coming from. I thought that myself. So if this body is comfortable with an adjustment to the agenda, to basically continue the alphabetical list of committees, with the ones that are noted, one through seven, we'll do that.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be the way to do it, with the only exception maybe being the police facility, because that's an ad hoc committee that's going to disappear after a while. So I think that would make more sense.
Okay.
Will do. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we used to have the temporary ones at one point. Yeah. Okay, so next, we move to the standing committees. We are going to start with Finance. Randy?
Okay, very good. Motion to approve resolution R-79-23, amending the 2023 TID number 15 budget prepayment of 2,500 rimrock TID incentive.
Second.
Before, Randy, we need two thirds of the vote, because it's a budget amendment. Okay?
Okay.
So what is this?
You want me to summarize? Okay. I'll summarize, and I know Misty is here too. She always fills in, provides all the details. So upon the absorption of the Town of Madison, the Town of Madison TID number two automatically transferred to the City of Fitchburg, TID number 15. The development agreement with 2,500 rimrocks states that the city can only close the TID early if the development incentive obligation is paid in full. Benefits of closing TID number 15 early outweigh the risk of prepaying the outstanding obligation. A sufficient increment exists in 10 number TID 15 to make the prepayment in total of 2023. It is recommended that we amend the 2023 TID number 15 budget to reflect the additional payment funded by the existing accumulated tax increment. And there's a number of other specifics that Misty may want to address.
Sure. So included in the packet was a memo that talked about those benefits and the risks of prepaying this obligation in full. Because really, we want to close this TID as fast as we can, you know, it's a carryover from the town. We would like to prepay this in full, and we think that those benefits of closing it early will outweigh those relatively small risks, considering this is a development that's in place. So I have enough cash on hand with the tax bills that we are collecting currently to pay this off in full. And if this is approved, I'll pay it probably end of this week. And then in a very soon council meeting, you'll see a resolution to do the affordable housing extension for TID 15. And then subsequently, will be a closure resolution to close TID 15.
Any question for Misty? Jay?
Yeah, what would be the impact on our levy limit for 2024?
It is relatively small. I don't have that number at my fingertips, but I can bring it, or I can email it to you.
That'd be great.
Any other questions? Comments? Okay, all of us in favor?
Because this requires a two-thirds vote, I'd request a roll call.
Okay. All of us in favor of resolution R-79-23, say aye. Oh, sorry, roll call.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart? Aye. Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Strossman is absent. Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. So next one, Randy?
All right. Motion to approve resolution R-80-23, amending the 2023 budget and various funds, ARPA slash TID closure investment plan projects.
Second.
Okay. As we are all familiar, the city received federal funding from the American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA. And that must be, that must be committed by 2024 and spent in 2026. With the ARPA dollars, the closing of TID number six, TID number four, known as ARPA TID Closure Investment Plan, adopted in 2022, and updated and adopted this past March, specific projects were not included in the adopted 2023 budget and require a budget amendment. It is recommended that we amend the 2023 budget and various funds to move projects forward. Misty, would you like to speak to the specifics?
Sure. So there are a handful of projects that staff is recommending we move forward with here in 2023, rather than waiting for the 2024 budget. They include things like the additional funds for the library chiller, the additional funds for the McKee Farms Park tennis courts, the strategic plan, the hub, stormwater issues, and a couple others. They're all in the packet. When you're looking at the packet, really focus on the blue numbers and the green numbers. Those will outline what the specific projects are. And then there's a bunch of other accounting entries that I need to make to transfer the funds between the different funds that we have. But there's, yeah, six or seven projects that we'd like to move forward with sooner rather than later.
Any questions? We need two thirds of the vote for this one, too. Okay. Do we need to?
Yeah, let's do a roll call. Yeah, let's do a roll call, please.
Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhart?
Aye.
Alder Herbst?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Strassman is absent. Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Tracy. So next, Personnel Committee?
We're meeting next on May tenth.
Thank you. Public Safety and Human Services?
We approved seven new operators licenses, and we have a number of events coming in the city. There's arthritis walk on Saturday, May twentieth, and we have a very large event at McKee Farms Park. It's an annual event, and builders for kids, and they're expecting approximately over six thousand people for that, for that event.
We are them in a park.
Well, I, funny you should ask, but, you know, when we, I mentioned this to Alder Allen, when we were planning that park, this was, this was, if we were going to have huge events, that's where we wanted them to be held, and they'll be, you know, parking will be a problem, but, you know, the park is probably, you know, there's a lot of acreage in that park. But it's, they set up on a Friday night, and then Saturday morning they start, and they're done, done in the afternoon, and there is a lumberjack show at, I think, ten noon and two, so.
Is there a fire out?
I, I didn't see one, but I can get you the, I can get you the information, Joe. Let me, let me forward it to you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So next, for new business, we need to postpone Resolution R-88-23. This is a board of public works.
Oh, I'm sorry, I lost my screen. I, I would move postponement of Resolution R, is it eighty-eight, twenty-three?
To May ninth.
To, to May ninth.
Second.
All those in favor of postponing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Nay, the motion carries. So now, okay, so next, we are going to discuss some claims that we need to go to a closed session, so I need someone to read the motion to go to closed session.
Madam Mayor, I would move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-eight-five-one-G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely, which it is or is likely to become involved. In this case, it's the refund of excessive real estate tax claims for Fairways Apartments LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-two-dash-nine-one-two-five-dash-two. Fairways Apartments LLC, parcel zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-two-dash-nine-two-zero-zero-dash-two. Fairways Apartments LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-two-dash-nine-six-five-zero-dash-two. Fitchburg Pines Apartments LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-three-dash-eight-five-zero-zero-dash-zero. Fitchburg Apartments LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-one-dash-one-eight-zero-one-dash-two. Franklin Square Condominiums LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-one-dash-two-zero-eight-six-dash-seven. Franklin Square Condominiums LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-one-dash-two-seven-two-two-seven-three-dash-zero. FRED-Ilan LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-one-eight-two-dash-two-five-zero-two-dash-two. And Valley View LLC, parcel number zero-six-zero-nine-dash-zero-three-one-dash-five-seven-one-eight-dash-two.
Okay, I need a second.
Second.
Randy? Okay. So now we're going to closed session. Oh, please, all, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries, so we are moving to a closed session. Thank you.
Would move that we reconvene into open session.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries, so.
Madam Mayor, I would recommend, I would move that we direct the city staff to proceed with a letter to this claimant as discussed in closed session, and that the expert wording of our city attorney shall prevail.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the motion carries. So next, we need to go to another closed session in consideration of the settlement offer from Artisan Village LLC. So I need to, a motion to, to go to closed session.
I would move that we go into closed session pursuant to Wis-
No.
Oh, we, yeah, we already did that. I would move we go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen-eight-five-one-G, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, and this is the discussion, discussion of settlement offer from Artisan Village LLC.
Second.
All those in favor, go into a closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries, and we are going to a closed session.
All right, Madam Mayor, I would move that we reconvene into open session.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we, the motion carries, so we are in open session now.
Madam Mayor, I move that we deny the settlement offer from Artisan Village LLC.
Second, their motion.
All those in favor of denying this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries. So next, we are moving to another closed session, to get, this is a discussion only, no action required, to discuss an update on pending tax assessment litigation.
Madam Mayor, I would move we go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen-eight-five-one-G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. An update on the pending tax assessment cases, FTC Retail East LLC et al., Gold Leaf Fitchburg LLC et al., Howard and Associates Profit Sharing Plan LLC et al., Tahhi Apartments LLP, Bowman Farms, Hy-V Inc., AMC, and Artisan Village.
Second.
All, all those in favor, go into closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries, so we are going to a closed session.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we reconvene into open session.
Second.
All those in favor to reconvene to open session, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries.
I'll move to extend the meeting thirty minutes.
No way.
Thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes.
That we need?
No way.
We don't have anything to do.
We have to report, we have ten, fifteen minutes.
I was just going to do thirty. I assume we'd be done faster, but.
Let's, let's do it in six minutes, thirty seconds.
Okay. I move to extend the meeting to fifteen minutes.
Okay.
All those in favor of moving the meeting fifty minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion carries, so. So, okay, so we are reconvening for open, from closed session and no action we're going to take on this item, so we move on to the mayor report. So it has been one week. Oh, I said, thank you.
Oh, they're gone anyway. I was just going to say if you want to thank them for the.
Oh, thank you, Amy. I said I said you before in the closed session.
You're welcome. My pleasure.
So, so mayor report, I have been doing some training and onboarding, learning some of the, you know, on base, also going through the capital improvement plan. Today we finished Fire and Public Works, and we are, the next meeting is going to be Police. So we have done the other departments. So, so working with Misty on that and Chad. I also went to a couple of, you know, represented the city to a couple of event, so, so that's it. So I want to thank Tracy, Chad, and Lisa for helping me with some of this transition and learning, so, okay, thank you. So other reports. So we're going to start from District one.
Nothing to report.
Just reminding, Dave is organizing a bike giveaway. It's going to be at three PM at the New Foundrent Apartments. Be giving away bikes, helmets, and we'll also have our new bike committee member, Ryan, doing bike repairs, so if you have kids who are in need of a bicycle, please spread the word. There's also an Allied Fresh food giveaway. It's going to be every Friday at two locations, forty-six-nineteen Genuine Road at the Boys and Girls Club, or at twenty-three-fifty Chalet Garden. It's first come, first served. If you have any questions, call six oh eight, eight two six, twelve nineteen, and the first one will actually be this Friday at three PM. That's all I've got.
Okay, District two, Bill?
A couple things. April twentieth, there were two public meetings. One was the North District Police Community Meeting, lightly attended, but the mayor and I were both there. I believe all, all of the attendees spoke at some point, so it was good discussion. Suzanne Levens is the manager at the Pines, the Fairways, and the Highline. She said, "We are welcome to post meeting notices in her buildings, as well as host our meetings there if we so desire." The other meeting was Cheryl Drive Stormwater Public Meeting. City Engineer Ben Schulte talked through the upcoming sewer system upgrades and accompanying road disruption and resurfacing projected to run mid-May through mid-June. One of the residents who lives on Cheryl Drive near Charleston brought up some safety concerns with traffic and kids running back and forth between the park and their cars, and I'll just note that that is the same stretch of road that other residents have complained about speeders in the past.
Okay, thank you, Gabriel.
No report.
Jay?
Just the construction on Sine Road continues. The Sine Road, Lacy Road intersection will probably be closed until the end of May, and I think that's all I have.
No report. No report.
Okay, thank you. So, next announcement, tomorrow we have a Committee of the Whole. What, Jay, what is going to be the topic for tomorrow?
Well, we have a bunch of topics. We have, Chad and Valerie will be talking about city resources and public records law, and then I do want to have a discussion toward the end of future Committee of the Whole topics. There, there's a, there is a list of the stuff that's already, kind of, the stuff we do every year that's already on the list, which takes up most of the Committee of the Whole options. So we may, depending on how things go, we may need to schedule an additional Committee of the Whole meeting or two, because I know there's, there's a lot of stuff that we need to get done this year, and we need to have time to talk about it in a setting other than a council meeting, so that stuff, we'll get into some more tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I think we usually cancel the one in November and in December, maybe we can bring those back.
Well, the, well, the one, so the reason those get canceled is because the one in, the one in November is usually on Thanksgiving Eve, and then the one in December, so we may have to do those at a different time, or we may have to do them earlier in the year, because there's stuff that, if we're going to go to a referendum this year to ask the voters for some more operating money next year, we've got to have that done before November. So.
Okay.
So that's more discussion.
Thank you. And next, common council meeting will be May ninth, and then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we are adjourned at ten, eleven oh three. Wow.